January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. I'd like to welcome those of you at home and here in the village hall. I just have a little remarks to read. Hi, I'm Chairwoman June Perrin, and I will be representing over this meeting. As we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for the commission, applicants and members of the public present tonight remotely. Applicants. Applicants will be muted by staff until their agenda item is called. Once called, the applicant will be unmuted to make their presentation and answer any questions of the commission. When your item is complete, voted on, you are free to leave the meeting. Public. Public comment will be solicited during each actionable agenda item. Once I ask for public comment on a special item, please click raise hand in the go-to webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. The meeting organizer will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmuting their audio to allow up to three minutes of public comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comment, speaking clearly during your allotted time. Please limit the background noise to the extent possible. When speaking, please be sure to identify yourself so that we know who's speaking, and do not use the chat or question function of the go-to webinar, as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast Channel eighteen or streamed at www.roilpalmbeach.com/youtube. Thank you very much. I'd like to, can we please rise to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands.
Thank you very much. Lauren, can I please have a roll call?
Yes ma'am. Chairwoman June Perrin is speaking.
Here.
Vice Chairman David Liedland.
Here.
Commissioner Philip Markey.
Present.
Commissioner Ray Nazareth.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Miller.
Present.
Laura McClellan, alternate one. Jell Brown, alternate two.
Thank you very much. Can I please have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting for the planning and zoning board?
I'll make a motion we approve the meeting for last meeting.
Thank you, and can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that was five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, agenda item number one. Public hearing to consider application number twenty-one-three-nine. The applicant is seeking architectural approval in order to repaint and replace the awning for two existing buildings located at one-six-five South State Road seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask, Lauren, do we have an applicant either in person or on the computer?
No, we don't.
Are we expecting anyone?
They were told.
Okay, I guess they are. I guess I'll just ask the board before Bradford presents if there are any ex parte communications with regard to application twenty-one-three-nine that need to be disclosed at this time?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitty. Village staff? Is anybody, are they going to make a presentation?
Yes ma'am. Yeah, I'm trying to bring up my presentation now. Can you see my screen?
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, good evening. The applicant is requesting architectural approval in order to repaint and replace the awning for two existing buildings located at one-six-five South State Road seven. The applicant is proposing to utilize cotton tail of an accent color, hiker's paradise, Mount Rainier for the vertical columns, and stainless sky for the awnings. Here is an illustration of what the building currently looks like, and this is what the applicant is proposing. Staff is recommending approval of this application. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairwoman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Is the applicant here?
He is not.
No applicant here. Are there any comments from the public? Saying no comments from the public. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? Any comments or questions from the commissioners? No comments or questions? Can I have a vote on that, a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve application number twenty-one-three-nine as submitted.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Anybody oppose the motion? Say nay. Saying none, the motion passed five to zero. Thank you very much. We can move on to item number two. Public hearing to consider and make recommendation to the village council regarding application number twenty-one-two-six, an application by Pro-Tech Auto and adoption of resolution number twenty-one-one oh-one, confirming council action. The applicant is seeking special exception use approval for an automotive slash or watercraft repair and auto service station on a zero-point-four-seven acre parcel of land located at three-hundred Business Parkway, Suite A two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh Bradford, can I go ahead and swear?
Go ahead, yes ma'am.
By the applicant in before you give your presentation. Sir, can you, I can see you, Mr. Patel. Can you state your name for the record?
Sir, my name is, sure, my name is Amar Patel.
And you're representing Pro-Tech?
Yes, I represent Pro-Tech Automotive, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. I need to swear you and the village staff also in. Can you raise your right hands, both of you, for me? Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to application twenty-one-two-six that need to be disclosed at this time?
No.
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
And can everybody see my presentation here?
Yes.
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 Okay. The applicant is seeking special exception use approval to allow for two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-one square foot automobile repair service within an office warehouse facility located at three-hundred Business Parkway, Suite A two, situated within the industrial general zoning district, the automobile and auto. Are you hearing him, Mitty?
No, Bradford, I can't hear you.
Okay, let me back up. The warehouse facility located at three-hundred Business Parkway, Suite A two, and situated within the industrial general zoning district, the automobile repair and auto service solicited as a special exception use within the industrial general zoning district. The automobile repair service will occupy Suite A two inside an existing five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-two square foot building on Track D of the Westland Center Plaza, and is outlined here in red. In reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses to see what the village's comprehensive plan and conformance with the village's development standards for the industrial general zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of village's comprehensive plan, complies with all applicable development regulations of the village, does not adversely, does not have a adverse environmental impact, does not have adverse vehicle or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, it's compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, and does not have a adverse impact on property values, adjacent areas, and not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to the village's standards, and therefore is requesting a recommendation of approval to be submitted to the village council regarding this application. There are many uses of this type within this business parkway, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairwoman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Is the applicant, would you like to make any comments or any presentation?
No, that was, I mean, that pretty much lays out exactly what we're, you know, we're proposing. But no, we don't have any additional comments right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I see I do have two comments cards from the publics. Lloyd and Margaret Rice, would you like to speak?
Hi, I'm Margaret Rice, and our business is Aquasoft Water Systems. We're at two-twenty Business Parkway and two-forty Business Parkway. We've been there over twenty-five to almost thirty years, forty-nine years in business. My husband and I started the business. The only thing I can say is, we see their cars that they repair, or they have nitrous on them, we know what nitrous is. And the park itself, you have a funeral parlor on the southwest corner, which has a lot of funerals. There's a lot of cars there, people walking around. Cars go flying by with the nitrous. And it is a concern for me because right across the way, we have a blood bank that is very, very busy. Lots of cars, lots of people. And there's a restaurant on the north side also, which is very busy, and cars parked everywhere, and has a lot of population going in and coming. But we also have a lot of trucks that unload when the cars come in with the wreckers. And when these cars fly by, you can't really see who is coming necessarily. And so it's really a danger. And I think that they do advertise nitrous. And these cars are very, very fast, they're not your typical car that I see. So it is a concern for us because that is a very populated business area with a lot of people walking around. So that's all I want to say. Like I said, we love it there, it's a wonderful area for business, but you know, with the noise and the fastness of cars, I think it's very dangerous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I also have a second card regarding this, Gary Hendricks.
My name is Gary Hendrick, and I've owned the Doll Factory in Royal Palm Beach since nineteen-seventy-four. We're directly next door to Pro-Tech. In fact, I foolishly sold the building to him two years ago, to the owner, and he promised to put in a pharmacy compound. Instead, he put in a race car shop. This is not merely automotive. It is a race car shop. If you would allow me, I can show you their webpage. They're a race car shop. Here are photos of some of the cars, many of them with no license plates, that fly through the Westland Center P O A, which I formed when I broke the buildings apart. The subcontractor or the renter here, Pro-Tech, ignores all rules of the association, all rules of Royal Palm Beach. He's been functioning for over six months with no occupational license, no nothing. Linda Walker's been trying to get him on board. Everything is a fight. I have to pay his water and electricity because he won't pay me because he's mad because I'm opposing it. And it's common area electric and water, so I have to pay for his water and electric. He flaunts the rules. He has, once again, if you look at his webpages, he specializes only in race cars. It's not automotive, it's a race car. These cars go a hundred-and-fifty miles an hour. What they do is they go up, they make a right out of their building, they go to the end, and they make a U-turn through the parking lot of the Royal Palm Beach rehabilitation, and they were going to try to get here tonight because they'll be treating patients, and all he hears, "Ahh!" And the whole building shakes. And it's their race cars, this is not automotive. And to make matters worse, he flaunts all rules. And he does install nitrous oxide, which is highly flammable and illegal in the state of Florida. I also attached the warnings from the state of Florida and EPA. I mean, it's a danger. We have a hundred-and-thirty-some-odd school buses going up that street. We have dozens of F T N L trucks. We have dozens of Wilco electric trucks, plus the people from the nursing home, the people from the funeral. Our lives are at risk because of this race car shop. How he can call himself an auto repair is, oh, it's so ludicrous. The man is a motorhead. And I can't prove it, but he has threatened me as well. So all I can say is, please, and we have in the P O A, the village attorney basically wrote it. In other words, she told me what I had to put in it when I divided the four buildings up like two years ago. She told me what to put in it, and it says, "No testing on vehicles either in the car or on Royal Palm Beach Business Car." And he says sue me, he's a litigant. May I give you the letter?
Thank you very much, Gary. Are there any other public comments? Would you please step to the mic, address your name and address, please?
How you doing? My name's Kevin Gillum. I'm at three-ten Business Parkway, which is across the street. I'm also the president of our association. My big concern would be speeding up and down the road. It's just a matter of time before someone's killed. Whether it be a person walking, walking their dog, whatever they do, they jog. There's fitness places over there, the people are up and down the roads. Extremely dangerous. Trucks sit in the road, as Aquasoft was mentioning, and they're unloading and going in between them. It's just a concern, it's a terrible concern. We have not had that prior. That building had a automotive shop, a real automotive shop, and there was no noise problems. The noise has sometimes drowned us out in the building across from us. I have no idea. You guys didn't think the noise was such a big deal. The noise is a big deal, but the noise is one thing. Speeding up and down the road is another thing. And I don't understand, I've been in this Royal Palm Beach Business Park since nineteen-eighty-nine. I have never seen them allow a business to operate without an occupational license. And to do this is unbelievable, that you guys have allowed this to allow. There's a procedure. Procedure is you get permission to bring that business in and do things right. That's how it used to be. Pre-COVID, maybe. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Lloyd Rice from two-twenty Business Parkway. As the others have said, it's extremely busy road. We got two big auto body shops in there, and there's constantly tractor-trailers coming in, dropping off wrecked cars, and we have the school buses, a lot of delivery trucks down there, and we get truckloads of salt. And quite often, the road is, have these vehicles parked in there, and you have to get around those. So it's a dangerous situation when you have cars speeding along there and cars that are illegally parked on the road, unloading. It was not a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Saying none?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If we could just make sure, I'm not sure if there's any public attending remotely tonight. If we could just ask Lauren if there's any members of the public wishing to comment online?
Okay. No, there's nobody online wants to make comments.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, thank you.
Can you close your comment?
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
I have some questions.
Yes, Adam, please go ahead, I suggest you.
Thanks, I think this question is for Bradford, actually. Bradford, what the public is saying is that this group, this business has been operating for six months already in this location. How can he, question is, how can he be operating prior to approval of this exception?
Right, that's a code enforcement issue. We were not aware of their code enforcement issue?
I'm sorry, Bradford, we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, that's a, that is a code enforcement issue, and we were unaware of any code enforcement issue citations for this site.
If I can add to that, this is Mitty, if I can add to this.
There's a lot of background noise in there. What is that? Really not hard to hear what he's saying.
I think it's coming from the council chambers.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
If you guys aren't speaking, you should mute your mics.
Okay, let's turn the mics off and listen to Bradford then. Go ahead, Bradford.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Mitty.
Bradford, were you finished? Yep, Madam Chair, this is Mitty. I just wanted to make an additional comment. The applicant is currently in code enforcement. They've been getting through the TSR process and going through this special exception request process. The operation without special exception approval, as was mentioned by Bradford, is a code enforcement issue. I will also speak to the business tax receipt issue. That is a separate issue as well that's dealt with through code enforcement. So the code enforcement part of this is not before you. They're here before you with their request for special exception, whether they've been operating without a business license, whether they've been operating contrary to their H O A documents in terms of speeding on the roadways, whatever the comments were from the public. There were a couple of comments about H O A document contravention. That's something to be enforced by the H O A, not the village. The village is enforcing its code with regard to certainly not having the appropriate approvals prior to operation. But nonetheless, the applicant is before you tonight with their special exception request. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, my question is this, what the public said earlier is that you're asking for a special exception for a repair shop, but you're not actually a repair shop.
No, and the fact that, you know, we're envisioned as a performance shop, yes, is partially true. But in reality, what we're doing is true repair. And nitrous is mentioned, and I feel, me personally, if we do one car a year that gets trailered in because it is a true off-the-street performance car, yes, that might be true. But I feel like nitrous is being thrown around because it's a fear. We agree. We're not here to just modify cars and drive up and down the street. Just, you know, I'm not the owner of that building, but my family member owns that building. For, even for their investment and for the sake of that area, that's not what we want to, that's not what we want to pursue as a business. So.
Well, we've just had numerous people, other businesses in the business community there, testify that you have cars racing up and down the road.
I, and that's, you know, I'm not, look, I'm not there every day, so I understand if that is going on, but I can't say that is going on from our shop. There are multiple shops in that business park. We're not the only shop in that business park.
We know that.
Yeah, you know, I know you guys know that. I'm just, you know, the public, you know, the folks that have spoken, and look, I take everything that they've said, and like to say that, how is it that we're the ones that are racing around when there's, I don't know, I don't want, I don't know, twenty shops, twenty-five shops? And I'm not saying, hey, prove it that it's us, that's not what I'm asking. I'm just saying that it's almost impossible to prove that it's us that's doing that. We have two employees, you know. Yes, after we fix a car, we do have to go test drive the car, right? But that doesn't mean they're zooming up and down the road. And I know that for a fact, because my business partner is the one that operates it, that's not, that's just not how he operates. So, and you know, with Mr., I think it was Mr. Hendricks' comments in regards to untagged cars being driven around, I think is what he mentioned. Once again, those cars, if they are being driven around, not by us or our staff, that would be the owners of those vehicles, and also doesn't mean that we're the ones that are working on those vehicles. So if untagged cars is because they're being trailered into us and then trailered out by the owner.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, I was in hearing from the neighbors, and that was my next question. And directly from home to Amar Patel, you're the representative of the staff and looking for the special exception due, okay?
Correct.
I heard the problem of nitrous, well, I'm the best friend I know, it's false evidence, and I was nitrous, I heard anything. Is there any proof of allegations?
For nitrous oxide? There's no truth to the allegation that we're driving cars that are equipped with nitrous oxide up and down the street.
Right, so basically, the neighbors, I'm listening to each one of them. I've heard nitrous, that's dangerous, okay? Now, but the next issue was lots of cars and people are in danger, with trucks and traffic. I just defend the pupil there, with one of our veterans. And I know that the people, you know, how they are procession, and if they're racing cars, and there's all kinds of danger to the public, I'm not for it. So I'm asking you, if you can interpret, why does it not endanger the public?
Oh, it would absolutely be dangerous to the public if cars were being raced up and down a public road. I agree with that, a hundred percent. What I'm saying is, you know, it's, like I said, it's hard for me to prove that that is happening. And I'm not, you know, the fact that cars are being raced up and down the road, I don't have footage of that. I don't know if it's my staff doing that. I'm pretty certain that it's not, because that's not how we want to operate this business. And like I said, my family member owns that building. It's not how we want to, and that's how we want to be treated by our neighbors or how we want to treat our neighbors. You know, I'd like to say we also, you know, there's a few folks, and I wish I had asked them to come speak. I did, you know, probably if I was a little bit more prepared, I should have, that we're helping those other businesses with bringing more business into the Business Parkway. You know, we have another mechanic shop that's in the building over that we refer back and forth a lot of business, and it helps both companies. So we want to be liked by our neighbors. We hate the fact that it's our neighbors portraying us, and we don't. don't, that doesn't make me happy at all, thinking that, hey, we're making this neighborhood dangerous. It's not, it's not what we want to, that's not what we're trying to create our objective to. And also, in regards to the business tax receipt, as soon as we had figured that out, that's the next morning I was meeting with Lauren in figuring out how to fix that. We were under the impression that that, that region, that Business Parkway, was already zoned for automotive. So we didn't think that it was, that we were gonna have to go through this entire process. Until I met with Lauren, I really didn't know. We thought it was a simple, hey, you know, pay for your business tax receipt, and you're kind of on your way. And that's when I learned about a lot of this, unfortunately. But as soon as we did learn about it, I wanted to rectify it, I wanted to, I wasn't trying to stuff it under a rug, I really wanted to be forthcoming and say, we made a mistake, we want to clean it up, how do we move forward?
Okay, I have another issue. Were you finished? This occupational license, for six months, can you explain that, please? Six months, you, it's alleged that you had problems for six months with an occupational license, is that what you're explaining, or?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was explaining.
Okay.
But the process with going through the TSR process, and now getting to this part of the process with this approval, that phase has taken us five, six months. From the point that it was, it was brought to my attention, from the day after, I've been working with, you know, Lauren and Betsy on how to rectify that issue, and not be noncompliant.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Chair, June, can I clarify something real quick? This is Bradford. Okay, as it relates to what a automotive and/or watercraft repair and/or service definition, and what it includes, we were talking about this idea that they were modifying race cars. Let me go ahead and read the definition to you. "An establishment which provides the repair of automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, watercraft, and similar vehicles, including complete engine overhaul and/or replacement of internal parts of engines. Also included is the repair of any portion of the drive mechanism, body and/or fender work, painting, and customization." And that customization really, it drives to the heart of what they're doing here at Pro-Tech.
You're welcome.
Yes, I do.
We do, ma'am. We do, yes, we have sufficient parking. I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, forgot to put my mic on, I'm sorry. You do have, I'll start from the beginning. You have sufficient parking, you said, right?
Yes, we do.
The nitrate oxide, is that secure? Is it specifically secured in a location that, does that cause any additional hazard?
It absolutely is. Number one, we don't, we don't really do a lot of it, but it's funny to me because it's being brought up like it's done to every car, it's really not. But yes, they're fully secured systems if that ever was to arise.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you very much. Okay, maybe you could just ask your car drivers, maybe you could sign something, maybe I would like to suggest, maybe asking them not to race up and down the block, or talk to your customers as they come in, asking them not to do that, because it seems to be, it seems to be causing an issue with some of the other residents at the Business Parkway, and I know that is a very busy Business Parkway over there, so.
Yes, we absolutely, I mean, that's something, I, you know, I plan on reaching out to Mr. and Mrs. Rice, and addressing their concerns. Like I said, I want the neighborhood to be happy, I don't want, I don't want to be working in an unhappy place, that's 100% sure. And I will be talking to my staff tomorrow and saying that this is what's being brought up, and it's not acceptable. So, the fact that we even have a persona of this amongst a few of our neighbors is not okay. So it will be addressed, I understand your concern.
Maybe you can see the best you can to work it out with your neighbors, so that it all can come to an animal situation, because we do are concerned with all of our residents and all of our businesses in Royal Palm Beach. So we like to make sure everybody's happy and secured and well-maintained, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, can I have a motion, please? Seeing no motions.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
We have a second on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed on the motion? Say nay? No nays, thank you. The motion was decided by, I don't know what Dave, Dave, what did you say?
Nay.
Nay, okay, thank you. All right, so the motion was denied by five to zero. Thank you very much.
Just so you know, this is not the end of it.
You can contact our offices, Mr. Patel, and we'll let you know where we go from here.
Okay.
Yeah, because all of this will go in front of the council, and they will address the issue in addition, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing that is the, that is the close of the planning and zoning meeting. We will now move on to, I will adjourn the planning and zoning meeting, and we'd like to move on to the local planning agenda meeting. Do we need to take attendance again, Lauren? No, no, thank you. All the same people here.
You want to?
No, that's fine. You can just let the record reflect that the same commissioners are present.
What was that, say again?
That's fine, you don't need to do another roll call, you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have approval of the last minutes of the September 22nd Local Planning Agenda Meeting?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, can I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Seeing no nay, pass five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we have. We have one agenda item, which I'm not gonna read the whole agenda item.
No, ma'am, you don't have.
But it's number 1011, okay?
That's perfect, thank you, ma'am. Just very quickly, and the ordinance, I have to apologize, the ordinance that you have before you has had an additional modification, which I'll read to you and to the record. But just generally speaking, this is a revision to the village's Chapter 15, which is your landscape code. As many of you likely recall, back in 2016, there was a fairly substantial revision to this chapter of the code, to build in tree preservation, essentially to try to protect the tree canopy within the village. Part of the ordinance involves preserving trees, mitigating trees, replacement schedules for different trees on different types of properties. So the ordinance before you tonight is a minor modification to Chapter 15. What, essentially what village staff has realized over the last several years in implementing the new ordinance is that there's a bit of a heavier burden on single-family and other residential types in terms of tree replacement. So there was some desire among staff to minimize those burdens, both with regard to tree replacement and also with regard to the number of shrubs and trees and the tree heights that have to be put on to select single-family lots, and then what I'm gonna add tonight is the other be simple residential ownership. So, in walking you through the ordinance, the first revision, and this is where I have to make an additional revision, but just, and also in full disclosure, the council heard this on first reading last week, we're doing this a bit out of order, just the timing was such that that's how it's processing. But the first major revision is to Section 15-79, that's your tree replacement schedule. And essentially what this revision, the version you have before you exempts out single-family residences. In speaking with staff, after this was uploaded to the system, it came to our attention that there are, that there are a couple of other types of be simple-owned residential properties in addition to single-family lots. So, what the revision that I've made to the ordinance is, now I'll read it to you, it says, applicability in Section B, it now will say, "Select be simple-owned property, including single-family residences, villa dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and duplexes shall be exempt from the tree replacement requirements of this section. However, single-family residences, villa dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and duplexes shall still meet the minimum landscape requirements of Section 15-130." So, that was a long-winded way to say that all we did was add a couple of other residential types that can be owned and be simple that would also have been subject to this tree replacement schedule. So, it's not just single-family residences, it's now also including villa dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and duplexes, which are also defined in the zoning code. So that, but again, they don't have to, they're exempt from the tree replacement, but they still have to meet the minimum number of trees and shrubs required on each lot, is what that revision says. The next revision, moving to Section 2 of the ordinance is to 15-130, and that, as I said, reduces the number of trees from 10 down to 6 per 2,000 square foot net lot area, and it also clarifies a rounding issue when Bradford and other staff have to calculate how many trees are required, he's having to do rounding, so he wanted the code to be clear that if the number falls within a certain range, to be rounded either up or down. So that's that clarification. The final revision is to 15-143, which again minimizes the burden on single-family lots, reducing the tree heights to 10 feet for both trees and palm trees on single-family lots, and also reducing the shrub and hedge heights on Page 6. So, again, these are just intended to help make the ordinance a little bit less restrictive for the single-family context. I think we were finding out that maybe too many shrubs were necessary, so we're kind of trying to, village staff wanted to bring this back, revise Chapter 15 to, to kind of reflect what they're seeing in practice is maybe a little bit too onerous for these properties. So with that, I'll answer any questions. Bradford, feel free if you have anything else to add.
Thank you, Mindy. That's it? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Seeing no public, is there any comments from the public? Any comments or questions from any of the commissioners?
No.
No, anybody, no comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1011, as proposed and submitted.
Thank you, and can I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Who's, I'm sorry, who seconded?
Who seconded?
I think Philip beat me.
Philip.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed on the motion, say nay. Seeing none, the motion passed five to zero. Thank you very much, and that was our only Local Planning Agenda Agenda Summit summary.
I make a motion to close the Local Planning Agency.
Yeah, can I make a motion to close the Local Planning and Zoning Meeting, please?
Think Adam did.
Yeah, I make a motion to close the LPA.
Okay, who seconded? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you.